The City of Vandelia Council Meeting for January the 3rd, 2016 is now on order. The first thing we will have is a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counsel, you had time to review the council study session minutes of December the 19th, 2016, and also the council meeting minutes of December the 19th, 2016. Are there any corrections or revisions to be made? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communication petitions or awards this evening's, nor do we have any public hearing. So that brings us to comments from interested citizens, and if you'd like to make a comment to counsel, would you please come up to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement.
This will come as no shock that I'm up here.
Who are you?
Happy New Year to you all. It's Jack Froshower, 1160. Hello?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me? I can hear you.
Okay. 11600 Castle Road, here in Vandelia. I say Happy New Year to all of you. Some of you, I've had the opportunity to say that personally, but I extend it to all of you, and thank you for the opportunity to have you up here representing us for another year. That's terrific. At the last meeting of 2016, oh my God, that's my phone. The last meeting of 2016. I made an accusation that we just don't make very good deals. And then I kind of looked over the agenda, thought about some things, and at the end of it, I'm really hoping that stops pretty soon. At the end of the meeting, there was conversation about the air conditioning unit, and that got me dwelling on something. Richard mentioned, wow, $17,000, does that sound like a lot to you? And I had some familiarity because my best friend is a caterer, and they just put in a 12-ton or something like that air conditioner. So I had a little bit of a guidance on it. And then Dave said, you know, we've tried to solve this problem on the bids and that sort of thing for nine years, and it's just what it is. Well, I think that's bad. I think it's a brand-new year, and none of you would run your houses like that, your households. We should get three bids on everything. And how refreshing to be in the workshop, and here the chiefs come up, and they were prepared. They had tried to select, and Parks and Rec, they want to buy some lawnmowers, and they've researched it, they've done analysis, and they're ready to spend the taxpayers' money. However, Chief Knight only got one bid, and that's no good. I mean, why are we just faxing a request for that, and we don't receive another bid? How can we possibly make an educated judgment? I just can't believe that Christian Hahn, if somebody called him up, I see him on TV all the time, out at Hyundai and Toyota, they would have had something comparable to a Taurus. I just can't believe that they won't submit a bid. I mean, I was in business for a lot of years, and that just doesn't ring correct to me. Are we still just faxing them a request for a bid, or is that the procedure? I'm asking you, John.
Either that or chief Knight.
Well, okay, don't bother with it. Don't bother with it. Don't bother with it, John. The fact of the matter is simple. We need a thorough review before we spend the money. Anything over $10,000, John can't just authorize. And I don't know if that means you have to have a resolution that requires three competitive bids, but I think it's a necessity if you're going to spend the money. I was listening last time, I could see Dave Gerhardt was about ready to blow his top when we heard about that they quoted us the wrong price on the software. But don't worry, it's still below what we were going to spend. Well, that's all right. They made a mistake. Then hold them to it. And are we getting bids on that stuff? Now tonight's a firewall for $10,000. Is there only one company? I don't know. And I didn't hear one person ask that. I mean, the chiefs were ready. They know the procedure, and they did the best they could to make the requisition for the money. But it's just incredible to me that we're spending, some of these smaller ones that are between that $10,000 and $25,000 level, maybe there's really not another vendor available to ask for a bid. But I don't know if that's happening at all, and I don't know if you know if it's happening at all. Mike made a remark at the end of the last meeting, that there was a lot of legislation pushed through, resolutions, ordinances. But, you know, it wasn't just about quantity. I mean, it's got to be quality. And I didn't hear a whole lot of questions at the last meeting or the last workshop. I mean, there isn't much conversation in here. Let's face it. You say to Jerry, by title only, you say to Mr. Cruzey, Mr. Cruzey, and he describes it, and then it's like, call the roll, and we vote on it. So the actual conversation doesn't occur too much in here. And you've got Bob. Bob's a business manager. I mean, he surely could give some direction on this, and he's settled in now, he's on his second go around. And I just think those, it's a brand-new year. And I know, I've been in these positions before, where after you've been in a slot for eight or nine years, and all of you, God bless you, your names are out in the hallway over and over again. But gee whiz, at some point, it just becomes, that's the way we've always done it, and I don't know that we visit it satisfactorily. And there are a lot of annual recurring things that I think should be discussed. And one of the council members warned me two or three years ago, whatever you do, don't ever say anything about fireworks. Because Dave said, the year we tried to do without the fireworks, man, I couldn't walk every five feet at St. Chris, I had to hear about the fireworks. Well, it's $26,000, and I know that Butler pays half of that, which is great. But do we ever, do we have to have Rosy's famous fireworks? Is there another vendor that does that? Have we ever tried to get another bid? When I was a little boy in Trotwood, Ohio, when it was a little village of 5,000 people, the fire department shot off the fireworks. Now, I don't know if our fire department has someone that has skill with fireworks. But you can ask Missy, when you leave Gatlinburg and you go by the world's largest fireworkshop, you could fill up a couple trucks for $1,000, let alone $26,000. It's something that I think could be discussed. And does it have to be 20, I couldn't even find it on 2016 agenda. I found it on 2015, and it happened to be a January item. $26,000. Would 20,000 be much different? Would 15,000 be much different? I think we need to research that instead of just rubber-stamping it right through. And that's how I will start you off for 2017, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jack. I think, I hope I did not misunderstand you, but Chief Knight indicated in tonight's meeting that he sent to the locals, and he also has a list that he sends to also. And I do know that whenever we ask for bids, correct me, please, there's a meeting that the people need to come to, and at that time, sometimes they drop out because of the conditions that are in the RFP and so forth that they cannot abide by. That's one thing. I know that during our workshops for the budget, Darren Davie explains completely, even the one year, brought us, well, toys to show us how and why things were the way they are and so forth. So I don't disagree with you that, you know, that the bids that we get are not numerous for a lot of these things that we are asking for, but I do believe that there are situations and reasons for the way that they are. And you might want to talk to our city manager about some of the other specifics, because I think we can answer all of your questions as to why they are the way they are. So that's just my comment, and I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, too.
Well, you're welcome to join all our workshops, because somewhere along the line, there's a lot of discussion. We've, yeah, we've gone round and round the fireworks discussion numerous times. I think at this point with some of us, we know where everybody's going to stand, and since, I mean, that's just one of your things, but the idea that Parks and Rec went out and got a majority of the money, it's much less to the city now than it used to be when we funded it all. It gives it a little sway. Personally, I could do without the fireworks, you know, but I'm only, it's just, that's just me. But, so we do have those debates. I don't know whether it's always in a workshop before a meeting or an annual workshop, but we do discuss, you know, how do we make, how do we get more bids? We could make our requirements less, more lax. That's one direction we could go. So there are things we could do, expect less in a bid. So all these things that you mentioned have reasonings behind them, and because, some of us have been here a while, I guess, and the discussion, we've heard the discussion over and over again, maybe we don't go at it again this year. But, you know, I could probably tell you how everybody feels about certain subjects when they pop up, because we've had these discussions in the past. So I think there's a lot more to, I see your point, but there are explanations and understandings, and it's not because we don't think about them or put the effort into them, and we would all love to see a lot of bids come in. But they do compare each one of them to a state bid. So that state bid is a bottom line or a basis, and if it were very different from that, then we would be alarmed that we weren't on the mark with something. So there are more explanations that we could take the time to explain each one of those.
Anyone else like to respond? Okay. Thank you, Jack. And believe me, your comments are good, and the problem with us right here this evening, all we're doing is actually the last part of a great deal of work that has gone on for months and months and months.
I don't mean to interrupt you. His comments are good, but they're off-base as far as what we do and how we spend the taxpayers' dollars. There's thought that goes into every dollar. There's night after night of budget workshops where we go over every dollar we're going to spend the next year. So to imply that we're just passing things through without giving it any consideration is about as far off-base as a citizen could be with how we manage the money here in Vandelia.
You know what? That's just great. But I'm going to tell you this, if you're not getting three bids on every damn thing you're spending, then that's not right.
If we're sending out five, and four of them choose not to send it back, that is not our fault.
Whose fault is that?
It's the businesses that choose not to respond.
No, that's your fault for not telling the city manager, we want three bids on everything we spend. I'm not off-base.
Well, if we send out-
That's not what you do at your house, is it? Do you just pick the first bid?
I think that if you-
I don't care to argue with you, Jack. I consider it.
Okay, I don't either.
All right. Have a good night.
Do it the way Paul should.
All right.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to the city manager's report. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got three items this evening. First is regarding our annual calendar report. Again, it was supposed to have been delivered on December 17th, but due to inclement weather, it's been delayed. So the Vandelia Butler High School Honor Society will be distributing, again, our calendar this weekend on January 7th. So, and they've all been shrink-wrapped to prevent any damage due to snow or moisture that we may have this weekend. In exchange for their work, again, the group will be presented with a contribution from the city toward their scholarship fund. Also, I want to remind everybody that city offices will be closed on Monday, January 16th, in observance of Martin Luther King Day, and also because of that closing, that our second meeting in January will be held on Tuesday, January 17th, at 7:00 here in this room. And finally, our Christmas tree recycling program is underway. So the Parks and Recreation and our Public Works Departments are offering Vandelia residents free recycling of their Christmas trees. Residents can drop their trees off at the sports complex. Again, that program began the day after Christmas on the 26th, and it will end on January 20th. Also, regular curb service for disposal of the trees, again, began this week.
Okay, thank you. There are no action items, nor is there any old business, and that brings us to our first resolution for this evening, and that is Resolution 17-R-01. Mr. McDonald, by title only, please.
17R-01, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a countywide mutual aid agreement with various jurisdictions.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The current Montgomery County Mutual Aid Agreement for Police was entered into in July of 1989, and has been adopted over the years by approximately 75 law enforcement agencies from 11 counties, including Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. The revised mutual aid agreement has been updated to include a CLIA or national accreditation requirements, and has been reviewed by all jurisdictions that are covered by the current agreement. Again, this is an update of the 27-year-old agreement, and really does not contain any substantive changes.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-01 as presented.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, and seconded by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-01 as presented. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Resolution 17-R-02, Mr. McDonald.
17R-02, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the design and engineering of the airport access road resurfacing and bridge repairs with LJB, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $49,947.66 as the best proposal and price.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The airport access road is scheduled to be resurfaced in state fiscal year 2018. Because the city is going to be receiving federal funds to assist in the financing of that project, we're required to hire an ODOT pre-qualified engineer for the engineering and the design. The bridge deck repairs, for which we have submitted a grant application, is also going to be included as part of that design work. In order to meet ODOT's project deadlines, the first-stage drawings must be completed by April 3rd of this year. The city did issue a request for qualifications for engineering and design services. We received three statements of qualifications. LJB, again, which has already completed the design work for the bridge deck repairs, has been recommended as the most qualified firm for this project, and our budget for this work is $65,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-02.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, seconded by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-02. Any comments?
Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Resolution 17-R-03, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution approving the replat for Vandelia MOB being the former Morton Middle School property.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So a replat has been submitted for the former Morton Middle School site, which is owned by the city of Vandelia, to accommodate the PUD development plan submitted by Yolo Development One. This replat involves 9.8474 acres, and would result in the creation of four lots from the current configuration of six lots. Lots number one and three do not meet the requirement of having 200 feet of frontage, with 119.1 feet and 174.28 feet respectively. Again, it's December 27th meeting, the planning commission voted 4-0 to recommend approval of this replat.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, Your Honor. Again, based on our conversations during the study session, there is some revised language we need to include on the plat.
Okay.
And that was simply to clarify that the development of retail multifamily and whatever the, I'm sorry?
Hotel.
Hotel, would be restricted to not more than three acres that do not front the property. It's not just 30% of what shows as lot four. And we discussed that in the work session, and-
And that will be on the Mylar, right?
We will, that will be on the final plat, yes.
Does everybody understand that, as we had discussed it? Okay. So then the motion would include the comments from Mr. McDonald.
I move that we approve Resolution 17R-03 with the comments of Attorney Jerry McDonald.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, seconded by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-03, along with the comments from Mr. McDonald. Are there any questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no first reading ordinances, nor do we have any second reading ordinances, nor do we have any emergency ordinances, and that brings us to our reports from boards and commissions with a variance request at 790 Hunter's Chase. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Scott and Katrina Buchanan have requested a variance to allow, their original variance request was to allow impervious lot coverage of 51% or 40% as the maximum permitted. Council discussed this matter at your December 5th study session. One of the requests was that Mr. Cron review the site to determine whether the proposed project would create any stormwater runoff issues for adjoining properties. Mr. Cron did visit the property and reviewed maps, which indicate a storm drain in Mr. Buchanan's yard, as well as three other adjacent properties drain. Based on that information, Mr. Cron does not believe installation of a swimming pool would negatively affect the drainage on this property. Again, Ms. Holloway has spoken with Mr. Buchanan, and he has revised the numbers for the impervious area. He's reduced the amount of concrete that would be placed around the pool. So based on those revised numbers, again, the square footage of the impervious surface would be 48.2% rather than the originally requested 41%. So in this case, the variance is now at, for 48.2% lot coverage, we're 40% as the maximum permitted.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the variance of lot coverage at 790 Hunter's Chase.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, seconded by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve the variance request at 790 Hunter's Chase. Are there any comments? I would just like to thank the applicant for working with us and through this process. Any other comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We also have a variance request at 1020 West National Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Okay, well, based on council's discussion during the study session, I thought the intent was to table this matter until your January 17th meeting, so that council has a review to, opportunity to visit the site and review the existing signage.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, seconded by Councilman Blakesley, that we table variance for 1020 West National Road. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and that will be tabled to our next agenda.
January 17th.
Seventeenth. Okay, thank you. You have the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes of December the 14th, 2016, also the Planning Commission minutes of November the 22nd, 2016. Any comments about those? With that, we'll begin council comments with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Cruzey?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Uh, Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman?
No comment tonight.
Councilman Blakesley?
He'll come in, thank you.
Councilman Fairst?
One.
Okay.
I'm glad to see everybody back for 2017, and that we are probably a little too used to working with each other. It's still glad to have you all to work with. Missy was kind enough to share, and I hadn't thought of it, and nobody else mentioned it, that we are one of the rare cities that still has the $10,000 requirement when an item comes before council of a cost that we still review it, where most other cities have a much higher threshold. So we do see those, those things that come in front of us. So we're at advantage.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I guess I would like to make a small comment.
All right.
I am all in favor of constructive criticism from citizens, but when I feel that our integrity and how we spend our money is being questioned, I'm going to respond to that and disagree. I welcome input from citizens, but if I disagree with what they're saying, I'm going to relay that back, and I feel entitled to do that, sitting in this position. As he is required to say what he wants, if I don't agree with it, I'm going to respond. That was the exchange with Mr. Freshour, and I agree with his right to tell us what he thinks, but if I don't agree with it, I feel I have a right to tell him I don't agree with it. And that was the extent of that.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing tonight? Vice Mayor Lewis?
Not now, Your Honor.
I know occasionally I do bring it up, and that is, I know we're televised and everything, and we usually don't have very many people in our audience, because I think that they do watch it. However, at the same time, the process up here is just to enact everything that we've been working on, in some cases, for years. And we have workshops beforehand. All of us council members get throughout the week notices and information. We get all of the minutes and the actions of all of our committees. We talk individually to people. We call our city manager when we have any kind of questions, so that we can get answers and so forth. And so what this is tonight is just the final phase of our work. So we do spend a lot of time. I know that each of us spends a lot of time in different ways. We visit places, we're involved in the community, and so sometimes I think maybe we should go back to the old way of council meetings, which would last eternity, and probably not make that much difference to someone who has not been involved in the entire process. Was it January 14th, isn't it? We're going to have another retreat.
Correct.
And that retreat will be from 8:00 in the morning till 12:00 at night. But, no, 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 no. It'll seem like it. It will seem like it, at 12:00 noon. And we have those several times during the year, and we've also been noted to call special meetings when there are things that need to be dealt with in a more timely basis than what our calendar might have us do. So, yeah, there's a lot to all of this. So, yeah, there's a lot to all of this. What?
I just wanted to point out, the retreats and all the workshops, all those are public meetings.
Yes.
And that's where really all the deliberations do take place. I know that council does do their own homework, and then they exchange all those ideas in those sessions, and so if you're interested in those, that's where you want to attend.
And there's discussion, sometimes heavy discussion, but we usually are able to get more information to satisfy any of the kind of questions that we might have. So, didn't mean to go on with that, but occasionally during the year, I feel it's important that our audience out there does understand that we just don't come in here on a Monday or Tuesday night, like tonight, and at 7:00, I do the gavel, and we go, yes, 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 no, yes, maybe, and then I hit the gavel. But I'm going to hit the gavel now for this meeting, but we are going to adjourn back to our workshop, because we're not finished with it.